Very good. Would you all please stand if you're able and let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, which is the same thing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cecilia will be here a little bit later. She called me. She has another commitment. So she asked us to go ahead and proceed without her. Welcome everyone to the October 9th Fisher City Council meeting. We have no announcements or proclamations. Do we have some presentations? A finance committee we met last Wednesday had a final talk about the budget. All talked about our debt and our cash reserves as part of that. Selena, you had a meeting with the rules committee. Did you want to say a few words about that?
We had a rules committee meeting and we reviewed the application process for the city. The process is essentially a resident completes an online application and after that, a message is sent back basically confirming receipts and tells them to reach out to Keri if they have questions. The application is kept on file for 24 months. In October of this year, letters will be sent to the current board members and commission members advising them that their term is expiring and asking if they would like to renew. In November, our website is updated with current openings and expiring terms and notifications go out on social media regarding boards and commission openings. So the social media, Ashley and her team will be sending out notifications during the month of November. In December, typically the city council has sent the boards and commissions with current openings and expiring terms. That may or may not happen in December this year. It could be January due to the new council coming on board. And in January, the boards and commissions appointments are made at the first city council meeting. The committee also discussed term limits and the committee decided that the term limits were to be left alone. Having people that have experience on the committees allows that experience to be shared with the committee and the community. Any questions or thoughts?
Thank you, Selena. Moving on. Health Department report is attached. Do I motion approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Moving on to item B, R100923, authorizing the city controller to transfer certain funds. I have a motion. Do you want to make a presentation real quick?
Wasn't that part of the consent agenda?
Moving on to item eight. Which is request for use of municipal budget.
All right. For the record, Lisa Bradford, city controller. The item before you is the second reading and the adoption of the 2024 municipal budget. For some background, this is the budget that was first presented to the council in August and then the same exact budget that we had the public hearing on last month in September. As a reminder, this budget has the $12 million to go to what we consider some priorities of the community for 2024 related to roads, trail connectivity, neighborhoods, and the opportunity to further develop and enhance some of those neighborhood vibrancy initiatives. And so this budget is unchanged from the versions you've seen previously. We've had three or four finance committee meetings specifically detailing the aspects of the 2024 budget. So if there are no questions, I'll ask for approval.
Any questions for Lisa?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay.
I just thought we were going to open it up for discussion.
We had a...
I didn't have questions for Lisa. I was... Can I still ask a question?
You're welcome to ask your questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry about that. Lisa, I guess I will direct my question to you then. After all, the one bit of information that I had asked a few times and haven't received yet was about the Barrett law and the private roads and exactly how much the property owners were going to be charged. Before we passed the budget, I was hoping to have that information to see if that was something that we needed to consider to be, I don't know, some sort of co-opting to put inside the budget, but we didn't receive that information. So...
I can't speak exactly to where we are in the budget, the Barrett law process. I know that it has gone for Board of Public Works. I will say that it's hard to put a number on the actual final financing for the Barrett law because it relates to the financing that will be taken out when those roads are improved. So it will depend their share. Everybody's absolute share is not set until you have a permanent financing structure.
And I thought, pardon me, I thought that was established like last week or two weeks ago at Board of Public Works?
They have the bid amount for the road work, as I understand it. That's the bid amount. That's financed through debt financing, which has an interest rate. We won't know that interest rate until we go out to finance.
And when do you expect that to be available and pinned down?
That, I cannot speak to that process of where we are on the Barrett law. I would say it probably, we're probably a few months out from that process, as I understand it.
I absolutely understand that the 2024 municipal budget needs to be approved this evening. I just wanted to bring that up and bring that up to fellow council members as something that's still outstanding. And the other component I just wanted to say out loud is we are grateful that the tax rate is being lowered a little bit. We understand that that doesn't necessarily mean that our citizens will pay lower property tax bills. But again, what's important in this budget is the tax rate has decreased a little bit. At the finance committee meeting, we also received information about the cash reserve strategy. We do anticipate that total cash reserves by the end of the year will be, I don't know, about like three times the required amount, which is still great cushion. We had a full conversation about that last month as well. And I understand that that is a good practice and careful and cautious, which is good. I will conclude by this. I wish that we had a careful cautious approach to our debt, our municipal debt that has increased, oh my gosh, almost double in the last two years. So I'm kind of concerned about that. We know debt service is part of this budget, but overall, city debt is a separate conversation. We did have that in the finance committee meeting. And our debt rating or credit rating has fallen a little bit. And that was pointed to for, because of our city's growing debt burden. I say all that to just present not only to citizens, but to just say out loud, like just the overall financial picture of our city. And I guess I'll ask you if there's any concerns there when you put all that together.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
I can, John, before Lisa responds. I just want to kind of point out a couple things that Jocelyn's making mention of. Bond rates are established at the time that the bonds are sold. Marketplace dictates the rates that are in there. The rates that are then judged upon the financial wherewithal of the city, which we are investment grade credits done by all the major reporting agencies around the country. I used to do debt. I used to sell debt to municipalities. I wouldn't even look at a set of financials if I had an investment grade debt. That's the way it goes. So you're going to go out there and you're going to get an investment grade rate for any of the bonds that we're selling out there. We are still a investment grade credit as it relates to municipality. So our debt load really hasn't changed much at all. You went from, you know, icing on the top with, you know, five marshmallows and a cherry. They just removed the cherry, okay? That's other than that, you're still investment grade. So make no bones about it. We're in super financial condition and you really can't put onto Lisa or anybody what the rate's going to be until the marketplace has a chance to go ahead and do that. Marketplace is moving. You've got rates jumping all over the place. You got, you know, all sorts of deflation going on. So there's no way to pinpoint that until the debt is sold. So just definitely aye.
The other thing I'd like to point out is, thank you Pete for that. I was going to say something very similar about the rates, is Jocelyn, you say that you're concerned about the debt. If you recall, you voted to spend the money on a stadium. However, you voted against the funding for the stadium, which would have come from, much from outside of Fishers. So when you say you're concerned about the debt, just keep in mind that you voted for a lot of that debt and you also voted for, to not fund it.
Not exactly, but I...
Thank you. Lisa.
Well, at this point, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Unless there's questions, we're making comments right now. Unless there's questions, I want to vote on this.
Sounds good to me.
Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Moving on to item nine, salary ordinance. Second reading.
Good evening. For the record, he's the lead director of human resources, here to present second reading of the 2024 salary ordinance and seek approval for that. Quick note, any of these salary ordinance changes to our current salary ordinance have either no effect on the financial side or of course have been captured in the 2024 budget. Third and the questions I'd be happy to answer at this time.
Any questions for Ethan?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. I just have a, thank you Ethan. Moving on to item 10, ordinance of the common council authorizing issues of bonds for funding of certain road improvements. Lisa, you're going to earn your money tonight.
I know. And I recall, I saw a public hearing with it. I thought it did. For the, for the, okay. It doesn't, not a big deal for the first reading. So the item before you, if you'll recall, was also discussed in the 2024 budget. It's our standard one year general obligation bond. This bond goes for our fleet lease, which is our replacement of vehicles predominantly, predominantly leased vehicles, fire equipment, public works vehicles. It also goes to finance road improvement projects and other trail improvement projects. So if you see and read the breakdown of the general obligation bond, it does spell out how much each kind of area will have funding for. And that's just related to show that no, none of the projects are over the control project amount. But this has been fully contemplated in the 2024 budget and its debt payoff has been contemplated in the 2024 budget.
Any questions for Lisa?
Our first reading.
We've had first reading. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 11.
All right. The item before you is related to the District South project. It is the first reading for the bonds for the District South project. As, for your recollection, the District South project agreement was approved at the June city council meeting. It's five buildings that will total over 133,000 square feet, investment of around $23 million in the Nickel Plate District. And so this is the bond that will help finance the construction of the District South project and is being issued pursuant to that project agreement.
Any questions for Lisa on this one?
Had first reading.
We've had first reading. Thank you. Moving on to item 12.
Item 12 before you also relates to the District South project. This is a statutory step related to how the debt for District South will be issued. So the debt service is payable from loan payments of the Town Hall Building Corp. And that's secured by lease rentals received from the Town Hall Building Corp. pursuant to a lease with the redevelopment commission. So the redevelopment commission's lease is payable through the TIP revenues. And the redevelopment commission approved their portion of the lease this afternoon. The Town Hall Building Corp. will consider their portion of the lease after the city council meets. And again, it's just a statutory step. That's the flow of funds for repayment of the debt service.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Moving on to item 13, inter local with Delaware Township regarding a trail design and construction.
Good evening, council. Lindsay, that's the attorney. I'm standing for Tim McKee tonight. This was informally introduced back in July by Jason Taylor. Glad to answer your questions. And I'm here to, the inter actual inter local agreement for council's approval. Just as a reminder, this is for the 131st Street Nickel Plate Trail gap. The city's going to be responsible for the management of the design, construction, and inspection of the project. And Delaware Township has agreed to contribute $400,000.
Tracy.
Get your mic. I think your mic's not...
There we go.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Lindsay. And thank you, all of you, for working together with Delaware Township to see this project advanced. And very excited about connecting the trail between Lantern Road and the Nickel Plate Crossing on 131st Street. Several of you have commented that when you drive 131st Street, you see what I see out my office window all the time. And then people struggling to get, you know, just along 131st Street. And I guess you've also noticed that I'm pretty smart because the last meeting I attended, mayor announced that Jason Taylor was going to be gone. And boom, I hired him. So he will be working and helping us with all the projects at Delaware Township. So very excited to have him on board. And again, thank you for the cooperative effort and look forward to seeing this work.
Well, Debbie, certainly thank you as always. Appreciate not only your cooperation, us working together as a team in the city of Fishers and always appreciate and also your friendship too. So we really appreciate everything you're doing for us. Thank you.
And if you have any questions you may have?
Any questions for Lindsay? Not only attorney, a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Thank you. Moving on to item 14, 041723C, consider for rezone of 190 acres from R2 to PUDR known as the Flat Fork PUD. Watch how I say that.
Good evening, Ross Hillary, Director of Planning and Zoning. Before you is item 14, which is 041723C, which is the Flat Fork PUD rezone. Fager Drinker, on behalf of Grand Communities LLC, is requesting the rezone of the 109 acres that you can see here for a residential PUDR for a construction of 225 homes in total. Highlights of this, since plant commission sold this earlier this month, there is no commercial as part of this development. We are also seeing the expansion of the Geisse Greenway. And they're providing setbacks of both five foot and 7.5 foot. Also items of note that are included in the staff report is updated traffic report and a letter from our neighbors to the south from McCordville. With that, on October 4th, plant commission did recommend a favorable recommendation of a six to zero. Just a little bit of background, here is the current zoning. It is R2 residential along with the greenway overlay, in which I stated, we will be seeing the extension of the Geisse Greenway as part of this development. The development standards were provided in this nice template to kind of show you what the current zoning is, the proposed base zoning, which is R5, and then the two zoning districts that they're providing there. From the comprehensive plan, this is all part of the suburban residential. So SAP believes that this is in line with the Fishers 2040 plan. And Murray Clark is here on behalf of the developer to answer any additional questions.
Hey Ross, can I ask you a question real quick while you're up there? And sorry that I missed the planning commission meeting.
No problem.
Off in Newport, Rhode Island at a wedding. So it looks to me that we've discussed traffic in the past. And I just want to point out where those corners are down along the south on 96th Street, which means you're taking away basically cornfields, is to improve the sightlines dramatically. My question is, is that if we are going to put future roundabouts in there, do we have a conveyance of right of way to get those roundabouts in? Or do we have enough in the current right of way as it sits?
With both of these developments, I believe we are accepting right of way as part of our comprehensive plan. So both these intersections, the one on the left is Georgia, the one on the right is Cynthia. Cynthia is planned for a roundabout in 2025 based on safety funds that the engineering department has already planned out. And then we'll see future intersection improvements at the other one. So this also goes with our friends to the south. McCordville, we work with them on developments. So they also have to dedicate right of way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of council, for the record, I'm Murray Clark. I'm attorney with the law firm with Fager Drinker with offices at 600 East 96th Street. Need I represent the petitioner in this matter? Mike Lewis, who's the land manager in the Indianapolis Division, Ryan Holmes is, which is a residential developer, is here to help me answer questions you might have. I might add that Dr. and Mrs. Ardeline, the owners of this property are here as well. As Ross mentioned, we did go before the council last week. I would note that I think our first reading for all of you was in the spring. Our first meeting at the plant commission was actually June 7th. And we've come a long way since then. Over the last several months, we've worked with the community and made significant modifications to our proposed PUD. And I want to thank all those in the community, particularly the Belmont neighborhood representatives, Council Peterson, DeReemer, Zimmerman, for your active involvement in this. And I think we've come a long way and come with a good product. Ross mentioned these are two infill sites in this PUD. The western moor of the two is the one that's located northeast corner of Georgia, 96th Street. That is comprised of about 50 acres, proposed for a maximum of 95 single family detached for sale residential home sites. The proposal here is really for ranch homes largely catering to step down buyers, perhaps empty nesters. We have an expected price range for these homes between $450,000 and $550,000. And we've made substantive changes to this community, particularly in the development standards area, including increases in minimum lot area, minimum lot width, and addition of a low maintenance community provision, which I'll talk about in a second. And the eastern moor of the two that Ross mentioned is located at the northwest corner of Cynthia and 96th Street. That's proposed for a maximum, it's about 59 acres, proposed for a maximum of 130 single family detached residential homes. This, however, will be a plan of, that proposes entirely two-story homes with an expected price range of $600,000 and up. And again, we've made substantial changes to this site as well. Both have really tremendous amenities. The Greenway that Ross mentioned, adjacent on the east side to the Georgia Road parcel, the western moor of the two, and then Flat Fork Creek to the east of Cynthia, which is really tremendous. So these two neighborhoods will include a diverse mix of two home, of two home collections. And all told, again, because of the different products here, we'll have 15 unique floor plans with two elevations for each. So I do want to mention a couple of the items that were brought up during this discussion, also brought up during first reading for the council. As I mentioned, we have made several modifications of the development standards for both parcels. And the setback, I want to mention the setback. So we increased the setback in Cynthia. The minimum setback for the Georgia site is still at five feet. Actually, it'd be more like 5.3 feet. But I think it's important to point out that we've, because of the product mix we've proposed, and really the significant strident anti-monotony ordinance here in Fishers, only two of the six floor plans would have, minimum side yards as small as five feet. In fact, only if you choose the largest home site and three car garages, would that small minimum side yard setback come into play. And then it's also, again, because of the anti-monotony ordinance, very unlikely that you're going to have two homes next to each other that would have the minimum side yard setback. And also, I want to mention that Ryan Holmes will be using hardy plank siding, which is mold and water resistant, unlike vinyl sightings, which we think also is a benefit in terms of what you might see in those setback areas. One thing we worked out with the Belmont neighborhood folks is we agree that the primary responsibility of care and maintenance of landscaping and lawns in the residential lots at the Georgia Road site, the western moor of the two, shall default to the HOA that will be formed. Thus intended to add additional assurances that areas like side yard setbacks will not experience kind of problems that we've seen in other areas in Fishers. So this is the low maintenance community language I mentioned earlier. Our materials, I'm sure you've read through all of them, are 75 pages, but in the proposed PUD ordinance is on page 14, if you'd like to see it. So with that, we appreciate, again, all the efforts of those that have been involved in this discussion. We look forward to your questions and we respectfully request a favorable consideration of this PUD.
Thank you, Murray. Any questions for the petitioner or Ross?
I have a, I have a few comments here. First of all, I want to mention that at plant commission, we have a member of plant commission who has mobility issues, is within a wheelchair. And one of the things that she pointed out when she was looking for a home in Fishers, is that she could not find a ranch. And I am grateful that this community, as she pointed out, is going to be providing ranch homes that will be beneficial to those with mobility issues and those with disabilities. And then I just want to thank Murray and the whole team for working with neighbors and counselors. I know it's been a lot of changes, but I think we're to a great place here and I'm grateful for your efforts. So thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead. Yes.
The traffic study that was conducted, can you share with us like the next steps on that? Because it's in the traffic study, does that mean that will actually be implemented as recommended in that report? Or can you kind of walk us through the next steps on that? Because it did include some improvements on 96th Street to accommodate.
Yeah, thank you. Tim McKee would be the best to kind of outline that. But my understanding with working with him on this was that we evaluate not only the home sites that we're bringing online, but also the home sites to our friends to the south. With McCordville, there's about 500 new homes going on south of 96th Street, plus this 225 here. So all that goes into play on what that traffic study is now actually analyzing. A lot of times, traffic studies are analyzing a future potential. Now we have more of a concrete answer of what the amount of homes would be. This development, like any other development, is required to make improvements along their adjacent right of way. This includes ASL and DSL lanes. It includes making sure that the lane of traffic that people are utilizing is 12 feet in width. So those improvements will come in as part of this development as is required for any other development that'll happen. And then we're already working with the developments on the south side of McCordville for right of way improvements as well as the ASL, DSL lanes along 96th Street.
Good. Thank you. Can you tell us a little bit more about what McCordville has planned and the timing of it as it pertains to the timing? Thank you.
Sure. So the development on the, I don't remember their names. They have creative names, just like we do up here. But the development on south of Georgia is already approved by their equivalent plant commission. And then the development on the right side of the screen is currently going through their plan process. As you can see here, the only development that has access of, straight off 96th Street is directly south on Georgia Road. And that is the most future section that's coming into play, which allows our team to work out the improvements along 96th Street. So...
So these are directly south?
96th Street is right at the top of the screen. And then, yes.
Directly south. Okay.
Directly south.
And then one last question for me, and that is about, now back to the Flat Fork proposal. The, what I... What I understand is there's 225 units, and some of the price points, they're all for-sale units, single-family homes, 200, pardon me, $450,000, like, is the starting price point for some, and the other ones are a $600,000 price point. That's right.
I can let Murray talk about price point.
And pardon me, because I know you just mentioned it, but I'm really interested in the price point for the two different sections.
So, remember the western moor, the Georgia Road site, those are all ranch homes. Our expected price range for those homes is between $450,000 and $550,000. The eastern moor, the Cynthia Road parcel, which is all two stories, we expect the price point to be $600,000 and up.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And perhaps, for my final comment, back to Ross, the price points are a concern to me because we knew from our housing study and then implemented in our 2040 plan, we talk about right-sized homes and attainable prices. And it doesn't feel like the price points that we're at here fit that priority. And I do appreciate that we're looking at the 2040 plan as the whole of our community and the whole of our housing inventory. But just to conclude, can you share with us kind of next steps on how we can prioritize and actually implement attainable, right-sized housing?
That's a larger policy conversation that perhaps as part of our 2040 annual update we can answer, but probably not relevant for this today since we're talking about just this one project. But happy to have a conversation with you all, Mike, as well, about what that strategy is.
Well, and I guess my question then becomes, as these projects are proposed to us, how are those set up against the 2040 plan and that priority? Like, and...
You have that comparison slide that you went through and how it aligns with that on the council, right?
Is this what you're referencing? Yeah, so we can see here what the zoning allows right now, which is the R2 zoning with their lot sizes and their required home size. Then R5 is the base zoning that this development is using. And then you can see the increase that we're showing here with the development, so.
I understand. I'll conclude by saying, I wish, talking about setbacks and thinking about that is indeed important. It is also very important to talk about our 2040 plan and where our gaps are in our housing inventory. And my concern is just making sure as we move forward with these precious new projects that come online, that we are aligning ourselves with what the 2040 plan says our priorities are.
Got it.
So, I'll conclude there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, certainly, I want to thank Murray and all of our counselors that, Brad, I know Todd, Pete, all kind of worked with the developer. The Ardalons, I believe, they're here tonight. Thank you. I'm sure at these price point, the neighbors that live by this new subdivision will be pretty dog unhappy with them. So, with that, yes, Todd, please.
Well, and John, I just, remember, I was a no on this initially, back in, I don't know, whenever we started, back in June, okay? We get accused sometimes of being rubber stampers, and this process has been amazing, just like a lot of processes we go through. There is a need in this community for ranch homes. This delivers. There is conversations that happen between residents, door-to-door, which fed into my comments here, including others. Brad brought multiple people from, I mean, how many, Brad, did you bring into the separate meetings? You rascal, about 80? I don't know, that's an exaggeration. But he brings a lot in, you know? And the residents had direct feedback into this and said, and decided at the end, this is what we need. And so, this isn't, you know, as policy lays out, this is, one of the policies that I have internally is find out what the residents want and deliver, just like we're going to talk about the community center here in a second. And the price points, I don't know what else you could put in that land that would even come close to those price points. I think understanding economic conditions, understanding supply and demand, understanding throughout our nation, there's a housing issue with regard to affordability. This isn't just a Fishers, you know, I would love for people to be able to buy homes at $50,000, but that's just not something that's going to be able to happen in this environment. So, I appreciate Murray. I appreciate owners. I appreciate the, you know, coming back to us and continuing to work and listening and not trying to ram something through, but really listening to the feedback. And now, I'm a yes. And I was a no before. No one put pressure on me to change. This was me making a decision based on what residents talked to me about, fed back to the developers. They came back with changes, and I believe delivered a good product for the Fishers community today.
I'm grateful for those comments, and I'm, I think where my head's at is just tempering, like, what is good for this particular area and these particular neighbors, and what is good for some gaps we have citywide? So, that is, that's the balance I'm trying to make. But I appreciate those comments very well. And this process has been great. The improvements have been good.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Thank you very much. Rowan, item 15, request to approve a vacation of a sanitary easement for Marketplace towns.
Yes, item 150100923B. Again, Ross Hillary, City of Fishers, Planning and Zoning. Before you is a sanitary easement vacation. This is a request to approve vacation for Marketplace towns. Our Marketplace towns is a Lennard Town Home development that's currently happening along 37, just north of the Verizon. This existing sanitary easement will need to be vacated, and new easements will be established. Staff is requesting to suspend the rules and approve the vacation at first reading. This is a public hearing, though.
Okay. Counselors, we have to have a public hearing, and also we'll go through the process of potentially suspend the rules. At this point, I will open it up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing as nobody's coming forward, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend rules.
I have a motion to suspend rules. Do I have a second? Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Moving on to the Flat Fork PUD annexation.
Yes, item 16 is a resolution. Item 17 is the ordinance. This is a request to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal plan for Flat Fork PUD annexation for Georgia Road property, and then a request to approve a volunteer annexation for the Flat Fork PUD Georgia Road property. Highlights, East 96th Street and Georgia Road, 50 acres in total. You guys just approved this PUD, so proposed single-family development and the Geisse Greenway extension. These are two separate items.
So, just to keep Chris under check, we'll do them one at a time, right, Chris?
Yes.
So, item 16, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion for item 16. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Motion to approve item 17.
I have a motion to approve item 17. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Do I have a motion to approve item 18?
So moved.
I have a motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Do I have a motion to approve item 19?
So moved.
I have a motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second by Cecilia. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Moving on to Magnolia Grove Salon Annexation.
Yes, this is a final reading. You guys saw the first reading again at last month, 1.76 acres for a new small business along 116th Street. This is two separate items.
I'll make a motion to approve item 20.
I have a motion to approve item 20. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Do I have a motion to approve item 21?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Moving on to item 22.
Item 22 is an ordinance for the first reading and public hearing for the Fishers Community Center Annexation. This is 24.99 acres along East 121st Street and Hoosier Road for the new community center. Public hearing is required.
Thank you, Ross. At this point, I will open it up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing as no one is coming forward, I'll close the public hearing.
My first reading.
I've had first reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other unfinished or new business? If not, yes, Brad?
I would just like to recognize October is the Mental Abuse Prevention Month, and to wear purple.
Thank you, Brad. This time, we'll open up for community comment. Anybody wishing to come forward, please state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Josh Huser, 12863 Shakespeare Way. Just wanted to share a few comments around the trash service discussions that have been happening. So, I currently serve as president of the Adlon Fishers HOA. We have a little over 1,000 homes, and we recently renegotiated our long-term trash contract. We sent out a survey, and we had about 40% of our residents respond. Some key highlights from that, we were looking at reducing some costs, and some of the things that we had potentially put forth to our residents were a reduction in recycling services. We found out a lot of people are very passionate about that, and so they're willing to pay the extra for that. But the other thing we heard loud and clear from residents were the opportunity to have weekly recycling pickup. So, something that we are offered currently, as well as throughout the greater Indianapolis market, is bi-weekly pickup. And when we took this back to our service providers, they said, no, you're not getting that unless you're under a municipal contract, because the only people that have that are the residents of Carmel, because that's part of their contract. So, that was something that we kind of found during this process that I wanted to convey. And then in our old neighborhood, we've had several discussions, just with all the, there was no HOA contract there, so every homeowner schedules their own service. And with the legacy waste management, Ray's legacy that is now waste management, as well as Republic, we have three different service providers that are in and out of the neighborhood, as well as different days for recycling and trash. So, any given day, or any given week, we have trash trucks in the neighborhood four out of five days. And that probably adds not only to aesthetic values by always having cans out at the curb, but also wear and tear on our streets because we're having that heavy truck traffic through the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Anybody else wishing to come forward? Good evening and welcome.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Irvin. I'm at 10523 Cedar Drive in Fishers. And I wanted to come tonight and just kind of discuss, I know that I've emailed a couple of the representatives and just kind of outlined one of the things that we've been dealing with, with the city inspections and the city permit department. Back in November, we had a city inspection for a foundation for an addition that we were putting onto our house, and the city came out and gave us an approval on that inspection. Come to find out with a new contractor that the foundation was not sufficient, and now we're dealing with an addition that was approved by Fishers that work continued on. But now, we are in the process of having to either remove the addition or do some kind of subsequent work to make the condition, to make this foundation meet approvals. We've tried to open negotiations with the city about finding some kind of resolution, and the city kind of brushed us off and said, it's not our problem, find a solution on your own. So, I'm here tonight to try to reach as many people as I can to make sure that the city abides by the contracts that they enter with their residents. And one of those contracts is pulling a permit and then making sure that the city upholds their end and make sure that permit is successfully inspected and then delivered upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come forward? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Have a great week, folks. Thanks for coming.